At this time, if everyone will please stand for education and plan. We ask permission for freedom of leadership.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All hands by the place. Our Father God, thank thee for this day. Our Father God, as we follow you and as we remain your servants. Thank you for this county of Gates. Thank you for the state of North Carolina and our great nation. We sit here to make decisions today and we will follow your direction as well as that of understanding what Jesus wants us to do. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the regular meeting of the Department of Agriculture for Act of the Second, 2019, to order. The first item on our agenda is approve the amendment for September 4th, 2019, and September 16th, 2019. They will both regular meetings and for the special meeting on September 16th, 2019. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve those amendments.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I will say that corrections have been sent in approximately as for typos and names and a variety of things. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, amendments are approved. Next item on the agenda is the budget, I mean agenda, approve the agenda. I do have a few changes on that under new business, number seven, amendment to the FYI 20 budget ordinance. We would like to move that under delegations, where the LGC representative Sharon Ednison, right under that.
Eight, can we do that?
Okay.
It'd still be new business.
It'd still be new business, but it'd be there. Because those ladies are here and they have typically back in Raleigh. So we're trying to accommodate them as well. Also, under new business, we need to add number 10 fireworks request for...
The new agenda has it for the audience.
Okay. I was, okay. Fireworks request for the Board of Education. Okay, and closed session, we will not deal, we will have closed session, but we will not do with number five, real estate. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, first, delegation is the local government commission representative Sharon Ednison and she was, Susan McCullen. I'm both here from LGC. Good morning.
Thank you for inviting us to come talk with you today. I appreciate y'all rescheduling. You would not have wanted to be here two weeks ago. Well, it contaminated everybody in the room. So thank you for that. I also want to thank Natalie and Kim for everything they have done in working with us and trying to help Gates County get where it needs to be financially and operationally. And we've been in touch with them frequently and they have just been great to work with. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. Finally, we'll make sure everybody knows Susan McCullen, my colleague that's here with us. Susan's got a great background in county finance and so there may be times that I defer her because she knows more than I do. We're here basically to discuss the issues that were brought out in your 2018 audit, particularly the financial condition of the county, the general fund and just the county overall. The first item in the letter was that the audit was late and I understand that that was somewhat of an unavoidable issue with the turnover that you had with staff and the fact that you changed auditors. I know the process is underway to have the audit completed on time this year and that is good news. So we appreciate again the efforts of your staff to make that happen. You know, we have issues with audits being delayed all the time and as long as it doesn't turn into a chronic problem, you know, we try to be understanding with folks. So I'm really pleased that y'all have gotten that process back on track and the audit will be on time this year. The next thing is the financial condition of the general fund. Primarily, the issue there is your fund balance available. Fund balance available is a statutory calculation. The formula is laid out in the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. And fund balance available is really your savings account. It's the money that you have that's the cushion to provide you funding for a variety of things. It's an emergency fund. It's a fund you use when unexpected opportunities become available. It's cash flow, when your cash flow is down. The county's fund balance available at June 30, 2018 was at 10 and 1/2 percent of your expenditures. All right, in 2017, that same calculation was over 33 percent. All right, so it dropped significantly between '17 and '18, about $2 million. Unfortunately, the county's not in a position to sustain another drop like that. You don't have an extra $2 million to use in the coming fiscal year or in the one that we just closed out. LGC policy is 8 percent bare minimum fund balance available. We don't recommend that anybody try to operate at 8 percent. That's only one month's worth of expenditure. And for a county the size of Gates, that's not very much cash. We do deal in percentages here so that we can compare apples to apples. So for example, the same calculation is used to calculate Beckenburg County's fund balance available. But 8 percent for Beckenburg County is a lot more cash than 8 percent for Gates County and other counties your size. So generally, the smaller the county, the bigger the percentage needs to be just because of the just the sheer dollars involved. All right, so again, Gates is at 10 and 1/2 percent at June 30, 18, which is the last data that we have. So you don't have really a lot of cash for any discretionary spending or emergency spending Reserves, as I said, are there for a number of reasons. They provide cash flow in emergencies. So for example, last year when Hurricane Florence hit, I don't think y'all had a tremendous amount of damage here, but county staff here did. And for example, Pender County, just the debris, the bill for their debris removal alone was over $5 million. And they had the cash flow back. Gates would not be in a position to be able to do that right now. And unfortunately, you didn't have that kind of amount, but they did and they had the cash flow, at least a good part of that. They're still waiting to get reimbursed for some of their money from FEMA, you know, a year later. So fortunately, they had a healthy fund balance and they were able to do that. But when you have low fund balance available, it makes it very difficult when you have something like a Florence hit and you don't have the cash flow that you need. Reserves also help you get through the low revenue months. So right now, your cash flow is rising, all right, because property taxes are starting to come in. And it will stay that way more than likely into January and February. I'm not exactly sure what your payment patterns are, but most counties get a fair amount of their, most of their tax revenue, of course, by December 31st and then it kind of bleeds over into January and February. But March through August tend to be lower cash flow months. Your outflows tend to exceed your inflows during those months. And so your fund balance is there to even out that cash flow for you. So you know, your cash flow is like this, fund balance kind of helps to level it out some. And so if you don't have that fund balance, it gets more difficult to manage that cash Finally, it does give you a cushion that you can draw on for unexpected opportunities. So you know, it's not always a bad thing that you're using fund balance for. It can be a good thing. So for example, during the recession, counties and municipalities too, that were well positioned with cash, were able to take advantage of the depressed land prices. And I know several counties bought land that they needed for schools and they were able to get it at a reduced price because of the recession. Some of them also took advantage of the reduced construction costs in that time and were able to build things that they needed, you know, for less money than they would be able to during good times. And they could do that because they had fund balance on hand to help those projects happen. I understand that county is implementing budget cuts to help deal with the limited fund balance and you certainly have the ability to do that. You can cut every department in the county if you'd like. There's no, nobody that's off limits, including the school system. And I don't want everybody to think I don't like schools, but when you do budget cuts across the board, that does include school systems. Just by the way, the school system has a healthier fund balance than the county does. They're at over 30 percent. And again, I'm not suggesting that, you know, you make an example out of them or anything like that, that they do have a better cash position than you do at this time. So the hate mail will come, I guess, from the school system next week. You can cut your departments unequally. You don't have to cut them all the same amount for the same percentage. I will caution you about cutting DSS money to be careful where you cut there because it's not always dollar for dollar. Sometimes when you cut an expenditure in DSS, you're also cutting the revenue because the state matches or refunds that money to you. So you can't just say, okay, we're going to cut 5 percent on DSS. You've got to be careful where you take those cuts so that you don't end up reducing your revenue at the same time. It is important to maximize your revenues as well as manage your budget on the expenditure side. The primary way that the county can do that is through tax collections. Y'all do a good job collecting your taxes and I encourage you to keep doing that. It's one of the main revenue sources that you control. You don't really control your sales tax and some of the other ones, but you do control your tax collection. So I would encourage you to keep doing a good job with that and keep being intentional with those taxpayers that are behind. All right, they are using county services just like the taxpayers that are paying on time. So if you can find a way to collect from them, I would encourage you to do that. Again, you've got to manage both sides of the equation, not just the expenditure side. On the enterprise fund, I know that there were some budget over expenditures there, but you don't have the issues there with cash flow like you do in the general fund. The whole purpose of having something in an enterprise fund is so that you operate it like a business and then you can see that operation separate and apart from everything else in the rest of the government. In fact, for an enterprise fund operation, ideally, you should be able to pull that out of the county and you don't want to sell it or anything, but just, you should be able to just take that out of the county and put it over here and it not affect anything else in the county. So it's self-contained. Everything that affects that operation is in that enterprise fund and it shouldn't affect any of your other operations. And I know there were some questions about transferring money from the enterprise fund to the general fund, just to shore up the general fund. I will tell you that even though it's not illegal, it is frowned upon, it's not a good practice to do that. Number one, it will disqualify you from getting state loans for your enterprise fund. You're not allowed to get state money if you're supporting your general fund out of your enterprise fund. And again, it's not an unending source of funds either. You know, if you pull enough money out of the enterprise fund, pretty soon the enterprise fund is going to be in bad shape. So I would encourage you not to do that. It's just not a good business practice. Those were the major issues, I believe, in the unit letter. I think I've covered everything there. What questions do you have for me about what was in the letter, why we sent it, what y'all could be doing differently?
Okay. Does anybody want to leave it off?
We need to make a formal response to what you have presented to us other than what we outlined and what we're going to do.
No, sir. Y'all already responded to this letter in writing and so that was sufficient. And then, you know, I just came here today to talk through it with you. There's no formal response, even.
As far as follow-up actions, we just need to look better in next year's, yeah, next audit.
Right, and what we're looking for is progress, okay? I don't expect you to be back up at 33 percent even by the end of next year, you know. Even though I know that the fund balance took a pretty big hit in one year, it will take you some time to rebuild it and I understand that. I just want y'all to be in a better situation where you have some flexibility. Right now, you have very little flexibility in your general fund because your cash position is not very good. It's not really at a really dangerous level and we don't want it to go there, but you are not in a position, again, to have very much flexibility. So we want to see that start to grow and reverse the trend, but we don't expect it to happen at the moment.
Well, we are currently faced with a financial dilemma that we're making adjustments on our budget after the budget season. We just started a couple of weeks ago addressing. And it's not going to be a one-time fix. We're going to have shortfall next year. We already know that. So we are facing a pretty rough situation right now and we appreciate you coming up here. I don't think you have a quick fix answer for our dilemma and you are aware of it somewhat.
So what is the situation by next year? Do you mean 1920 or 2021?
Well, first this year, our budget is balanced. There's a problem with our budget. We've got to cut the budget that we're passing at the end, at 1st of July.
Okay. Yeah, I can talk with Natalie about that one.
And you know the dollar?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I mean, so we sit here as a board, we can't make bricks, you know, about cash and we're in a tough situation. If you have any recommendations, you know, I'm all ears to see what you might have to say about that and I'm sure there might be some other people have some questions about what you can...
Okay. Well, we'll be glad to go through the budget in more detail and see if we see anything else.
When you say you'll be, you'll be glad to go through it, is that something you would do in-house here? Is that something you would do when you get back to Raleigh and send information to us?
Probably when we get back to Raleigh, I'll even get some more detail on the budget. I don't think we have all of the detail and back set up.
I think so.
We'll need to get that and then go through it. Again, it's, you know, what we can do is look at it and give you our recommendations from our perspective. Y'all are the ones that know what Gates County needs and, you know, what's priorities. We can make recommendations, but wouldn't necessarily be the same thing you would choose to change though.
And of course, the quarter we do is better off going to be.
Right, I mean, it's, we're in October now that's impossible, but you know, you're already a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. And so the faster you get things adjusted, the more time you will have to spread those adjustments out. If you wait until March or April, you're going to end up having to make some pretty severe cuts to repeat...
So time is important.
Yes.
And we've, we've been thinking some freezing in the projects over the last several years, called the wastewater system. We've had some overhead expenses to come in, so it's not like that there was not justification for going over it in our general fund, but we had to use the money to try to take care of some of the special projects that we were doing in the county, major projects like the wastewater system. And that's one of the...
To touch on that, we inherited a wastewater system that was failing. It belonged to the prison, but our schools used it as well, but it belonged, it belonged to the prison system to the state. And when we inherited it, there was inspection done of it and, I mean, the capacity that it was at, I mean, we had to do something. And so that's where this little snowball started, right there, and then there were things that kind of attached to it. We had to purchase land for, maybe spray field and things of that nature, which hurts quite a bit.
And we did get grants for it, but unfortunately, we have to pay, we had to pay upfront and we're not going to be reimbursed with those grant monies. But you know, we had to put the money upfront, pay contractors and all.
There are very few upfront grants anymore. They're almost always going to trigger them, which means exactly what you just said, you have to pay first and then get your reimbursement. I would encourage you just to continue to be aggressive with asking for reimbursement so that you're not out with cash for long periods of time. Is there more work that's still needed on that system?
No, it's, I'm not...
It's just like 99.5 percent.
Okay. Is there any opportunity for you to add more customers on that system?
Not really.
Okay. So there's not another municipality anywhere near here that would be able to use it?
And certainly not immediately.
Also, you know, we work with schools to help with, do a addition to the schools, but one is, well, one of our grants was that we gave a lottery for five years. So that was additional money that we used to count revenue that we want to have for in all three years. And we knew going in it was going to be some tight years here at the very beginning, but we wanted to get that project done on the board and done. And you know, when we talked to Davenport Financial Consultants, there were at the very beginning some very tight years.
I think it was about three years in their succession that we knew were going to be tight budget-wise. And we've got, Madam's got a document, Madam Chair.
They have that document from last year when we went before the...
To get approval for that.
Yeah, I do, I remember that. Well, and you know, part of this issue, again, like I said, we don't expect you to fix it overnight. It may be with, really just have to grind it out until you get through the process. How much are you still owed on the grants, do you know?
I think it's $1,000, I'll tell one of them.
Okay, so not a lot of cash, okay.
And another issue that is new to us, that was new to us this year in our budget, is EMS. And that's going to be a reoccurring issue on the upcoming budget for next year, 2021. So you need to scrutinize that. We've been operating, they've been operating a lot of volunteer labor and regulations have caused them to have to go away from volunteers to pay personnel. And that's, that's the thing that's caused that, as well as their equipment getting outdated a little bit.
I would like to, what was the cause we were making business?
We will routinely come talk to boards that have questions about what you can do to resolve your issues. So Natalie asked if we would come talk to you so we'd be available to answer whatever questions you might have.
It's part of that, sir.
Yes, it's a routine thing for us to do.
Yeah, because of the letter that you sent or the letter we received dates back several years looking at the progress of the county.
We, I mean, we look at trends. We don't try to ding people for something that happened in one year and that, you know, is not likely to recur. So for example, if your fund balance had dropped this year because you had a timing issue, for example, with FEMA money, which is a good example because a lot of counties are going through that right now, you know, we would have talked to Natalie and said, oh, you're going to get most of that money back. It's not going to be an issue next year. We're fine. But unfortunately, that's not your situation.
Right. And for the purpose of the public and those who may not have done any research, you are actually under the Department of State jurisdiction.
Correct.
And you really perceive to be the standard and forward agency, correct?
We do analysis similar to what a bond rating agency would do, yes. We start the staff to the level of government commission, which is an oversight agency that oversees all the local governments and states. Yes, Palos County, Stiles, public hospitals, about 1,300 units.
And if I heard it correctly, you said transfer of funds from enterprise system is not illegal?
It's not illegal, but it is not considered a best practice. Again, it will disqualify you from getting state money if you need it.
I did hear you say it, but can I interject something? I did hear you say it this way, well, just to be, to make sure we're correct. I heard you say that it's not a good practice to take money from the enterprise fund and we're basically speaking about the water system. But you said it would prevent us from getting state funds for that enterprise, not for the county, but for the enterprise.
Correct. Any of the loan packages that DEQ offers, the zero interest loans and Clean Water Management Trust Fund, they all have a transfer certification requirement now. And if you've transferred money from your enterprise fund out to another fund, you then are qualified for any of those things.
So it all pinlines the, what, the undernehmen, right?
And also, basically too, you also help local government, help us or whatever supplement a plan and maybe develop a strategic plan.
Yes, sir. That's what, we'll take a detailed look at your budget and see if we have any ideas for you. I will warn you that we're not marital workers and I know Natalie's done a good job. Natalie and Kim both have done a good job of going through the budget. So I don't expect us to find any huge changes that need to be made. We will work with them to try to maximize what you can. But again, it may just be that you are going to have to grind it out for a few years until things slowly start to improve.
One thing we can do to start is make sure we get our audits in on time.
Yes.
And that is a big thing we have to, hopefully, one of the counties that, you know, the audit firm split up and that created, that was a snowball.
Yes, ma'am. We had so many units of government that called in, opened out. Last year, of course, the later the audit is, one year impacts the following year and it's just really hard to catch up once you get behind.
And that is in a proper place and we had some changes in the finance office, so.
Correct.
That is created someone's problem.
But just for the record, historically, that's not been an issue.
It has not been. It has not been an issue for Gates County that I recall.
Pretty much out of our control.
Yes, I understand.
And part of that assistance that you provide through State Trader is also supplement or also assist in fiscal management?
Yes, sir. Again, we can, we can provide you our thoughts and ideas about the way you can do things to maximize your cash flow, but at the end of the day, it's really the county's decision as to what advice you want to take from us or from other folks. Again, you're, you're the board, you're the one that knows the needs of Gates County better than anybody else. So we can make all the suggestions in the world, but you don't have to take any of them, but you don't want to.
I understand. And I know that several of our citizens and folks who attended, probably a few years back, y'all took over children, you said, correct?
No, sir.
You did?
No.
Who did?
Nobody did.
But nobody?
They pulled themselves out of the hole they were in, Ednison.
Is it? All right.
It was a lot of hard work and they, that was a very difficult situation. They, I'll never forget that. I got a phone call from the finance officer one day, she was in tears, said she didn't know she didn't have cash to make payroll. And y'all were not even near that, so don't. But I've only gotten that phone call twice in 27 years, so you don't forget those. But they worked really, really hard. I mean, you would go to the county offices and again, I'm not suggesting that this would work for y'all, but you would go to the county... but you would go to the county offices and they have all the lights off and the windows open. Of course, where they are, they got a nice breeze coming out of the water there. Um, but they said they were doing that to save money on the electric bill.
What you all did come here and oversee?
We worked a lot with the board to emphasize to them how important it was that they correct things. Um, because they were, even more than you are, they were very, very close to running out of money. And again, I'm not suggesting y'all are in that situation, but they got, they got really close. And so we worked with them to try to make sure they made strategic budget cuts and that they maximized their cash flow. But they did the, the hard work.
And you have the authority to take over the county, run the county?
We do, we've never done that, don't want to.
I don't want to. Don't want to take up your use.
No, we, we have three units right now that we're managing and that's about my, my maximum capacity.
Yeah, well, I think that there was used quite a few times though, that, uh, you all came here and you guys took over.
Yeah, and yeah, that's unfortunate because we did not take that action. The county volunteer, voluntarily took the steps they needed to take to turn things around. But it took them probably five or six years to completely dig their way out.
It's probably a pretty good record for North Carolina since you all established in nineteen thirty-three, isn't it correct?
We like to think so. We didn't have to take anybody over until nineteen ninety-eight was the first time, from nineteen thirty-three to nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay, any additional questions?
Well, I think if we clarify how we can go and how we resolve the issues that we've got.
Well, that's why we're here.
And they are going to say that's why we moved the amendment.
Right, we'll, we'll listen to the budget conversation.
But just, just to clarify, Madam Chair, and it's more of a statement. Um, Ms. Edmondson, the reason you're here today is because the county dropped two million dollars in seventeen and eighteen, a couple of years ago. So the bigger question is what happened since eighteen eighteen to drop two million dollars? That's not for you, that's for the board.
I can answer that right now, that went to the wastewater project.
That we're getting the money back, is that right?
We're, we are going to stay for the budget conversation, so if you have questions, we'll try to help you with those things.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and, um, I will leave some of my business cards with Natalie if anybody wants to contact us after fact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, at this time, we are going to divert, as we said, we amended the, uh, agenda and go into the amendment for the, uh, fiscal year twenty budget coordinates. Uh, we have had, uh, as I say, some new information on your guests that you've provided with, uh, that they, they have come up with as well. We have two new documents in progress, um, besides the one that we got, like with... I guess I'll turn to the county manager to explain what this new budget revision.
The one that you received yesterday slightly increases tax revenue. We've got some tentative numbers yesterday, so I just made very slight increases. Actually, I only increased two lines by a thousand dollars. Um, once again, trying to be conservative in case after the first or second quarter of the revenue decline. And then with the expenditure side, excuse me, the ones that you have, I went back and made some adjustment, adjusting for a part-time study and does not start working until January because we anticipated after the start of the new year, the historic four house coming online. And then also adjusting the, uh, capital projects out of one by a slight amount and the software and IT expense for a small amount, which is the budget. The other one that you have in front of you that the top says budget for property and liability, this is P and L for property and liability insurance corrections. We finally received the property and liability, the actual amounts and that they were, have been properly allocated to each of these departments. So that actually changed very little in the budgets, but that is what that one reflects. The major change is that the sheriff's office, uh, there still had the decreases. The sheriff's office is now at one and a half percent and the school is one and three-fourth percent.
Sheriff's department, previously, what was percent?
One and three-fourths.
And one and three-fourths to?
To one and a half, and the school went from two to one and three-fourths. So the school now is fifty thousand, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars.
I wonder if your page numbers are the same as ours?
I don't have page numbers because I'm on a spreadsheet.
Have we heard, um, when you said this one goes forward though, about the insurance, does this include the workman's comp?
No, ma'am, we don't receive those type of figures until later in the budget year. Same with the department insurance.
Right, sometimes there's adjustments, I mean, we pay them more than actually need to do. So, um, but the point is that we need to make changes in the budget and then again, we can add this money back in. It's always better to add money in than have to take it.
And I did request if anyone had any recommendations and did not receive any.
Now, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at twenty thousand, six twenty-five in this column.
Yes, that is something that we discovered, Kim and I talked about, that we felt like was going to be an issue because of the way it was budgeted, it appeared it was double budgeted. But that has already, that's been accounted, that was one of the changes that she's found and she was actually going to talk to the auditors about. Uh, but since the auditors went out, they'll be here the next week and then the following week. Um, we went ahead and took it out and it did not really affect the budget. It was just a change.
That was concerning, um...
It was a grant for emergency management. And it had followed, it, the way it had been accounted for, we felt like could cause an issue. It was changed two years ago, the way it was accounted for under another finance officer, so we've changed it. So that it's a cleaner way to review it. And the records out of the finance officer.
Just for the sake of, uh, you walk the heads and, uh, about his offices. To do this to our budget revenues and expenses, they should equal. In other words, if I've got, if I can account for a half of these dollars coming in, I've got a half of these dollars in expenses. I shouldn't have, I have these dollars in revenue, it's over a hundred thousand dollars back. My budget is not balanced, and you've got to figure out a way to get the other two hundred fifty thousand dollars. When I looked at the, the budget, uh, that was sent to us several weeks ago, I saw that, uh, our revenue was sixteen billion, but, I'm sorry, yeah, sixteen, but I'm, this is a temporary thing. Well, I don't have the exact figures, but it wasn't, excuse me, it wasn't dollars.
Um, which is, which budget sheets are you referencing?
The one you did, uh...
When we had the workshop.
Yeah, the workshop, right there.
Commissioner Jordan, uh, pointed it, uh, pointed it out to me. It was a million dollar difference, uh, but one side was sixteen and the other was seventeen.
Was it because one column was what was budgeted and one was what was recommended?
I don't recall exactly.
This is the one that we had, right?
Yeah, definitely seventeen, forty-five things they had though.
And what you have actually is just fund eleven because that is what is, and the fund eleven is never sixteen or seventeen million dollars.
He's referring to the one that passed, passed through grant dollars, I'm sure, if it's sixteen, wouldn't that be true?
That would be every fund that we have.
For expenses, because we look on the last page, it's seventeen, sixteen, six point eight twenty-six. Last page. It's the last page, was it eleven two?
That column is not that actual, that's, that's not the actual amount. It is actually the twelve mil, it is actually the sixteen million, the six hundred and forty-two is, is actually does balance. Um, the difference, because I didn't print every, necessarily every single one perhaps, but the fund summary page, you have to look at that as well because when you change numbers, it from eleven, it affects sixty-one and sixty-two for reimbursement amount. And there was actually surplus of hundred twenty-nine dollars unaccounted for that needed to be put into the expenditure line of the solid waste fund. So that balance is where sixteen million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred, excuse me, sixteen million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So seventeen, that's your expenses back?
No, sir. It's the sixteen million for the total budget. Because the eleven fund is the twelve million amount, which is now being twelve million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-four, according to the budgets that you received yesterday and that I finalized this morning for the property and liability numbers.
That's all, sixteen, sixteen. You know, all of this, the sixteen billion, I'm just saying, sixteen million is passed through things.
No, ma'am, that is included every month, that includes the enterprise fund, that includes all funds.
All funds, totally.
The rebound fund, the automation fund, fire, about fire fees, all of that. So if you're looking at, for example, if you're looking at the one that says the insurance amount, if you include, uh, fund fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-eight, sixty-one, and sixty-two, it's a, one sixteen billion and six hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars.
Okay, additional questions?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask Ms. Edmondson a question, if, if it's possible.
Answer something else.
I put you on the spot.
We want to hear the podium.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
You just can't forget, I'm sorry. You said you've been doing this a while, I think.
Yes.
Two or three, five years.
I'm like twenty-seven.
How many times, how many times have you seen counties have issues or having, having to come back after a prepared balanced budget and come back and have to address?
I really don't keep track of that, but it is not an unusual thing, particularly in a smaller county with an already tight budget. You know, um, unfortunately, in the rural parts of the state, you have difficulty finding qualified staff and y'all have had some turnover with the finance officer position. That will affect, you know, people have slightly different ways of doing the budget. And so anytime you have a change in personnel, that's going to affect, um, in some ways, how your budget is presented. Again, because people just have different ways of doing things. Again, in a smaller county, you have a tight budget to begin with. One thing that you have to go in and adjust is going to have a ripple effect where you're going to have to adjust across the board maybe, um, such as the kind of things you're having to deal with. So it is not unusual, I don't have an exact number for you, but it is an unusual situation.
You, go ahead, tell me something.
And I will say too, is counties, all, all hundred counties, um, you know, are tweaking their budgets throughout the year just as a matter of good business practice.
Let me add something to, um, concerning the specifics of the, of the DSS revenues that were over budgeted. Uh, that, that change in moving those business processes through the state to the NCFAST program is a unprecedented state move. I mean, that is a, a project the state has been working on long-term, transitioning, I mean, y'all know that, transitioning counties to that business process. And without someone with a vacancy in finance and, and, um, just the change in those business processes, it's easy to see that something like that got missed. A lot of counties kind of got caught in the timing between when they were doing their budget and the timing of when their specific county got transitioned to the NCFAST thing. So I, I would think that there were probably a lot of counties that had to do something with this kind of mid-year.
And that was affected by seventeen for, for Gates County.
Yeah, but, but, but the, the state DSS not necessarily communicating very well with county finance departments or budget people, um, that there was probably very little communication there, if any. And so, and, and so DSS people, maybe not the, I don't know, your DSS people maybe not realizing the timing of it and the impact on county budgets. So lots and lots of counties would have gotten caught in that, I would expect. So I don't think y'all were unusual enough.
And when the NCFAST program rolled, I, it didn't have, it rolled out across the state, every county wasn't put off.
Correct, it, it, it came out in, it layers, um, based on how they could add, um, different parts of the state. So it was not necessarily very predictable as to when they would be doing it.
Because, you know, and the state sends like this letter, I mean, figures to us and it had a figure on it that was in the, in our budget.
Yeah, so, and, and, and they don't necessarily even know very well when they're going to, it's not a predictable process, I guess I'm saying. Um, so, um, and, and, you know, and they did it across multiple funds. They did it with food stamps and then daycare and, and so it's, it was not just each process was rolled out, large revenues for counties, uh, large pass-through revenues for counties, but, but they were all, um, impacted in different ways and, and so it's not unusual, I would expect, for counties to be caught by this.
This was a huge change in the way DSS does the shooting, so there's going to be some pickups.
Yeah, yeah.
It was not smooth at all.
Well, I think they did the best they could.
Yeah, I, I'm not criticizing them, just anytime you make that kind of significant change in the organization, the size of the DHJMS and with as many moving parts as there is behind the counties, you know, there's going to be some things that don't work quite as well.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Um, because I, I have some, some questions for, you helped me understand. In our budget, what was affected, this... In our budget, what was affected this, this NC FAST? And I'm familiar with the rollout and it's done in phases and everything. There's only two line items in our budget that are affected by it. And last, last year, one of those line items, we didn't spend a single dollar, talking about DSS, okay? We didn't spend a single dollar. And we budgeted five thousand dollars. On the other line item, we spent just a little bit of money. We only budgeted five thousand for that, didn't use all of that. But we are behind six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If they didn't spend, if we didn't request or have a need last year for less than five thousand dollars, why has this thrown our budget off six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
I, I think the way I understood it is that the revenues, the expenditures got budgeted conservatively and then that revenue item did not get reduced appropriately. That's the way I understand it, it would happen. I think it was, it was an oversight at budget time and...
But if, but if our expenditures were less than five thousand dollars, you can make a ten million dollar mistake when you go to correct. We're only talking about five thousand dollars when you correct because we weren't going to spend.
But you gotta, you gotta, you gotta correct the revenue side.
Yeah, I understand. But how does, how does the revenue side at DSS affect the sheriff's department, the school? That is where I'm struggling.
Oh, it's going to affect the entire budget.
Why would we be appropriating dollars that the state, DSS, the state didn't send us, the, the state of North Carolina, the state, DSS, sent us those numbers in an email.
Yeah.
And they say plug this in.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you don't want us, I, I know DSS is not an enterprise fund.
Yeah.
You don't want us mailing, moving enterprise fund, water fund dollars to something else. You say it's bad practice. Why, why did we get caught with money appropriated for DSS into the sheriff's department and into these other areas?
Well, it's, it's, if there's not going to be, if there are expenditures budgeted there because you have to balance your budget, it's all in a big county pot.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yeah, it's all in a big county pot. And, um, if there are expenditures there that are budgeted, anticipating revenues that are not going to be realized, whether those are tax revenues or sales tax, in this case, it happens to be DSS revenues that you, you, you may be budgeted on good faith from the state, but the reality is that your budget for twenty-twenty has to be balanced. And state law says if there are revenues there that you're not going to realize, such as these DSS revenues, that you're, you're going to need to revise those expenditures, those preparations.
Right, so...
But it's a big pot.
I understand what you're saying though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the money's not going, we're not the receipt of funds. So, so there's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of bills out there that are going to exist anyway because we had to operate, right? We have to operate. So we were, when we budgeted, we needed that six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to operate this county.
Yeah.
And now a paper, a, a, a paper issue, a six-digit number that's not going to exist. I mean, it was never going to exist.
You would never realize that.
But we used it as if we had.
Yeah.
And the same thing occurred, and then this I struggled with, the same thing I'm told occurred in previous year's budget.
It did. I, I do believe.
And we didn't receive that money then, did we?
I do believe it was in the previous.
That's why you ended up using fund balances.
Yeah, that's why you end up using fund balances, yeah. So the reason.
But we'll work with Natalie to give better, some more clarity on that and see if we can come up with a better. I, I, I understand what you're saying because I don't know where you budgeted DSS revenue.
Yeah, but it's just a big pot. If I may, I have pulled some other budgets from before my time and that has occurred in fact.
Wow. But seventeen is when the change occurs with NC FAST.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah.
So, um, and I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand.
No, that's not, no, they're good questions.
They're, they're, and we're getting good questions.
And it's a tough problem, like Sharon said, you're not going to, this is a, a problem that will take years to turn around.
So let's go, let's go, uh, as Natalie mentioned, let's go back well before Natalie's tenure, well before anybody here in the tax office, anybody DSS, let's go back to two thousand and one. So was it proper for us to take money appropriated to DSS in two thousand and one? I'm just pulling that number, that year out there. And you, and put it in a big pot and say, I know this came from part of social services out of Raleigh and, and federal dollars Medicaid. It's okay for us to, to spend that firepower?
We'd...
Cut grass.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I mean, I, I understand your question. Lots of times, once you get reimbursed for, and that's not true for all federal grants, but for most federal grants, once you get reimbursed for expenditures that you've, you've made and they reimburse you for stuff, then when it comes to you, the nature of it is no longer restricted. So you can use it to cut grass. That's not true for something like CDBG or something like that, that has...
So you're calling the grant, you're calling the DSS dollars a grant?
Or DSS grant or, or federal state subsidy or some, you know, whatever it is. It's, it's federal state money. It's, it used to show up on your, your, uh, CPO, uh, schedule that showed your grant lines.
And that, uh, so now that, that, now that FAST has rolled into Gates County, that situation fades in, is, those dollars will never, never expect those dollars again.
Correct.
Because FAST is, is rolled out.
Correct.
Is there, to your knowledge, is there another line item left in FAST that hasn't rolled out? Or is it complete?
Uh, that's a question for your DSS.
We didn't find out.
Please, please find out.
I, I think we're finished, but I want to check. I know food stamps done first.
Yeah.
Mrs. Holly, what food stamps done first?
Yes.
And then it went to...
Then you have all, of course you have your emergency medical transportation and you had your child daycare, since those daycare programs in twenty-seventeen, both transportation and childcare in twenty-seventeen.
And that's where...
Yes.
How it went off the roof.
And they, I was fixing to, did you want to go over that today?
Yes.
So this, yeah, yeah, the others.
I think they've done it.
Yeah.
Part of I think what Commissioner Owens is, is, and I won't put words in your mouth, he sits on the DSS board and, and so do I. And you, you were sitting right beside the director and the admin officer, a few meters behind her. Um, I've gotten phone calls saying, why did the DSS board make a six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollar mistake? You know, as a DSS board member. And I've also got one that's, why did commissioners make a six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollar mistake? You serve on both boards, John, so you, you're doubling, you screwed it twice. Um, the, the, and, and I think what Commissioner Owens is getting at is, what's the rationale? Where's the blame? And I hate to use that word blame, but six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars is a pretty hefty mistake. And, and it's like you said, Ms. Edmison, I wrote it down, to grind out over a few years. You said that phrase a few times. Um, that's a big issue to overcome in a small rural county. And that's what we're faced with right now. We're nickel and dime the department heads for three and four hundred dollars, um, trying to come up with six hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah. And, and you're going to deal with that again in twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
Or twenty-twenty-one, when you do your budget in the spring coasting. You, still are not going to have a line item that, I mean, that's...
Revenue line.
The same cut, you're not going to have a revenue line there. So that's a sustained cut that you're going to have to continue to manage to, yeah.
Yeah, because we're not, I mean, that's going to prevent us from building back to thirty-three thousand because we've got to come up with that every year.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Or as we retire, as we retire debt,
Right.
we're going to have to stop taking on new debt.
Now, I would say, um, Natalie said that the wastewater, um, project was really what caused the, the large debt last year. Um, if there are grant, if there were, you said most of that project, a lot of that project was done with grants, but if there were general fund resources that went to that project that have not, um, have not been recouped by the general fund, you could, you could, um, develop a plan to pay back your general fund from that wastewater over time. That would not be a transfer. That's, that is, um, we had to front some money and, um, to the extent that we didn't get grants to do the project, you can, you can do a resolution that says every year the wastewater place will pay back X. I mean, that could be a way that you could, uh, identify an additional revenue, revenue in your general fund that would get you some money, um, that would be perfectly reasonable and would not be directly with you, I do not believe.
No, I mean, the, the money with the recently accounted for in eighteen as a transfer, so we'd have to go back and get your statements re-done to account for it as a line of service transfer. Um, but then you can pay back the money.
So Natalie, you said we used, the all two million dollars was from...
No, not all, not all two million was for that, but because it was the paper, other things. But the fourth bucket was that. And we, three hundred and fifty thousand of that is to go from the wastewater project is used in this budget proposal to fix the project.
To help cover up the shortfall.
And will that make the general fund whole, that freaking?
No.
Okay, no.
But we've still got some more.
We've still, we've still got more because we increased some of the tax, uh, estimates because when she received, can't receive the final quarter for, for nineteen, it was a little bit higher. So we've increased that and then that left nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to be cut from other departments.
Now, let me ask a question, um, because I want to make sure I, I understand. So if the general fund, most of the decrease in eighteen, and maybe we just need to look into the numbers. If a lot of the decrease in eighteen was from the project and you're moving three fifty back this year because the prices closing, um, that's fine, but there may be more general fund...
Right.
...money that was put into that project.
Correct.
That you could, um, rework and call loan and reimburse yourself for over time.
Well, we did a resolution when the money was moved to reimburse the general fund balance anyway.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that have, is there a time limit on that?
So what the plan was originally was to take all the money that had been moved from general fund and the enterprise fund with those resolutions was then to put that money back into those funds.
Yeah, yeah.
So when we had discussed, you know, moving that money early, colleagues, it's just about finished. We have a few outstanding bills.
Yeah.
And we're, or still do that small amount from that one grant that we have to receive before we can formally close that project order that's, excuse me, in order to move all of the money.
And if there's... I'm wondering why the, the statement last year showed it was transferring, isn't really going.
That's the conversation they have with the auditor. Okay. And we can talk about that offline. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the retroaction plan.
So let's, um, let's say that this didn't occur this year. Would our auditors, should they have picked up on something like this? Would they have seen that?
Is she looking at us?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Or are they just looking at, plus or minus?
Perhaps, they, perhaps. They, they, um, they may be looking at a different, at a higher level and not necessarily seeing the, the, the whole thing. I, I... I, I guess they...
So...
In the column that we just got in twenty-eighteen, they did say general fund balance to actual results. They did say the loss of daycare transportation.
Okay.
And program, and decrease of federal and state grant activities. That's why the general revenues were five point six less than a million.
Yeah, and we have on that number review as well, yeah.
So they mentioned that part, but they didn't mention Medicare transportation.
Yeah, that's half of the, that's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. There's, so there's two hundred and forty-nine thousand that they didn't mention in their document. So if it had been from this outlet doing her homework, we might be in, like you said, later in the year, January, February, earlier.
Trying to do it, yes. She is to be commended for that, yes.
So, so let me, let's go ahead and touch on the basis, the last, I think this might be the last base we'll touch on and say, you're going to look at our numbers, you're going to make recommendations. But there's one recommendation that you've already made and, uh, and that is to the finance department. We're pinching pennies and you and our auditors say that we need another person in there. You're familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, now in our current situation, you feel different about that or can you elaborate on it?
Um, I mean, that's totally up to y'all as the board, but, but the reality is that, that if there are, um, not people there to do work that is collections and those types of things, then in the short term, you are making a, a, a long-term decision that you might not intend to make. If you, if you don't keep your tax collection rates strong, then you impact what you can budget the next year uh, because you can only budget what you collected in the prior fiscal year. That limits the amount of your levy that you can actually budget in on term.
Excuse me, but one I'm...
Is that what you're talking about?
I follow you correctly.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm talking about over in Kim's office.
Oh, in Kim's office, okay.
Checks and balances.
Oh, okay.
Collections.
Okay.
That was, uh, Natalie and...
Yes.
Madam Chair, that was a recommendation from the LGC as well as our auditor?
It wasn't necessarily a recommendation, it was something we had to...
Some finding.
We had, we had observed that the county was lean for a county finance. Yes.
It's difficult for finance to do everything they have to do with the number of staff that you have.
Yes.
I understand when you're looking at budget cuts, it's really hard to justify adding positions. Um, and in the short term, maybe not, you know, do that. But I do think long-term is something we need to think about because, you know, there's, county finance is only getting more complicated, it's not getting easier.
It's not getting easier.
And, um, you know, the more people that you have that are qualified to do that job, um, there often be... So for example, if, if Kim happened to win the lottery next week and take off for Bahamas, or not the Bahamas now, but...
Land's cheap.
You know, he would want to be able to continue to function, obviously. And, um, so I think, again, I understand the short-term situation you're in, maybe it's not the best time and the optics wouldn't be great for adding a position, but I think long-term, longer-term is something you need to think about.
But that was in the, in the findings during the budget workshops and, and I won't put words in anybody's mouth, but my recollection is it was recommended by the LGC that would be another position in finance. We heard that a few times, um, a, a number of times, that that was a recommendation from LGC. But I tend to believe if there wasn't a two million dollar drop between seventeen and eighteen in our fund balance, we would have got nothing from LGC. Because that's what initiated this, is that correct?
Well, that, the late on.
That, the late on, yeah.
That over the spending, so I mean, there were other issues, other things from that one strong.
Yeah. But the fund balance drop got our attention because ten percent, ten and a half percent in a county is not a lot of money if you have a hurricane up through here. And we are in eastern North Carolina, it's just a matter of when.
We, we have a good emergency manager, the director, he, he goes to other places and helps. So he's got a barrier around Gates County.
Good for y'all.
I, I don't want y'all to think, the fact that you got a letter is not a punitive thing. It is, you know, we're trying to help you resolve your problems.
Yeah.
So, you know, escaping getting the letter, and I know nobody likes to get my love letters, but they really are to help you help yourselves resolve your issues. And, you know, we want to help you too. And we'll do what we can to assist. But again, at the end of the day, it's, it's your decision. And we'll do what we can to assist, but again, at the end of the day, it's, it's your decision how you're gonna handle this.
Okay.
I know, too, partly by Madam Chair, that as part of the process, we began to look for additional revenues and begin to ask for them. So I'm beginning to look at someone's general statutes to GS one fifty-nine thirteen A fourteen, I believe it was, generating profits that the county can do so. If, do you see anything there that county can generate profits even from the enterprise? As you were saying.
I, I, I.
We'd have to look at the numbers in more detail, but just in, in theory, there's no reason you can't generate profit in the wastewater fund. But again, it's not a good practice to just give that money to another fund. You really need to keep what you generate in wastewater fund in wastewater fund. So, but, you know, you need healthy reserves there too because you're gonna need repairs, things are gonna break on that wastewater treatment plant. And so you're gonna need, you need to push in there as well. Another thing, and I have not talked to Natalie about this, is to make sure you're taking advantage of all your cost allocations across your funds. So things like her salary, Kim's salary, you know, all the funds need to be paid and they're, they're shared with that because obviously they work more than just the general fund. So if that's, you know, not something you're taking full advantage of, that's a way to legitimately move the money out of the wastewater fund, that's a challenge.
I do believe y'all are doing that, we talked about that. And that is not included in your transfer number, that's included in the, in those fund expenditure numbers. And that is appropriate.
Yeah, and of course, with our wastewater, I would say, I'm not sure whether that's going to break even.
Yeah.
So, because we don't have a lot of customers.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to take a short break.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, but we need to take a break. Five minutes. I have a question. Um, you know, we are trying to come up with a solution to our problem and you said you can take a look. Would it be, you know, we have a proposal for, or if you don't, you go ahead and act on it or wait? For as long as you wanted to hold the, the problem, the way you can.
Um, we did talk with Natalie about proposing the dollar we had today and I think she's suggested is reasonable. So I would agree with that. And if it turns out later that you find a giant effect that you will, you know, some big changes that you can make, we could always get back to reverse things.
And money.
Again, not really your, your, your dinner off or something, so I would agree with you.
I, I, you know, if you go ahead and act on it, then your departments are, are dealing today with a, a known number. And you'd say you take a lot of the uncertainty out what your departments.
The brand of approval.
Right.
We can't buy headquarters. But, but, okay, that's just a question.
Yeah, no, but we'll be glad to look, we'll be glad to have some talk with Natalie and Kimberly and hopefully thereafter we.
We just do a few days.
I agree with you, we are special and we need some attention. And I heard, I heard you say you'll be back in a couple of days, few days?
Um, it'll, I'm always so optimistic on that. It'll probably be closer to the end of next week.
End of next week. Camera coming over there.
We're gonna make you sign the word.
We appreciate it.
I know, we, we were the last ones to do this.
Yeah.
Okay, any other personal questions?
Thank you, I'll come today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be in touch. Okay, please do.
Well, actually, because it's discussion, you'll have to have another meeting to allow the school board to provide a prepared statement.
That's it, we go with this proposal today.
Okay. I want to give you, should we go back, go to the record order of business and come back to that? Okay, let's go to the record order of business and then come back to that. Okay, on a nice allegation, does anyone sign it? Okay, we'll go to the administrative reports, county manager.
This is for August seventeenth through September the twenty-third. As of the writing, mountain engineering is working on the French drain around the west wing and replacing the sidewalk along Church Street. And that has, both of those projects have been completed. And thank you to the town gates for paying reconstruction of the sidewalk along Church Street. We do have to finish the bathrooms, the foot or handicap accessible bathrooms that are being gathered and downed lines will be run to the historic warehouse. County is awaiting paperwork from various businesses within emergency commerce in order to submit for final reimbursement from the rural center for the wastewater project. Completion paperwork will be completed by municipal engineering on behalf of the county for EDA. Interviews were held in office for various vacant positions. And John Edelson, who is with us today, began work as the annual tax administrator on September the tenth. Frank Cook began work on September sixteenth as a part-time code enforcement technician. Emergency management coordinated plans for Hurricane Norton, chaired half-line I attended the control session meeting. Communications with emergency management was maintained during the storm and the county reported no damage. On August the twenty-eighth, Lisa Cherry and I attended a meeting and ringed, hear about various funding resources related to recovery and resiliency. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any, uh, tax report?
No.
No. Mr. Edson, was it? Yeah, I'm sorry.
And you have the tax report on for this because the end of the month was on Monday, they had to finish everything yesterday.
Uh, appreciate so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
With consideration today, I've got the tax collection report for September. I don't know if executive procedure will be used in the past, but what I'd like to do is present it as provided in John's tax one oh five three twenty-five and John's tax one oh five three eight one, which covers the release of refunds and the banking for, for the taxpayers. As you say, you got the report, we can take it as a unit or we can do it individually depending on the coverage required. And how would we like to proceed on that?
Well, we generally kind of ask questions about the report if we have any questions about this report. I see Zakiis and looking at that number, we have received twelve, almost thirty thousand dollars, twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety percent this month from the legal taxes.
That's correct, and I think their payment discount for Zakiis was twenty-seven hundred and thirty-five dollars we paid out, the fees collected. And added, it's a wash through account and they charged that and then collected and reimbursed.
So it was ten thousand dollars basically, basically to boot all that in waste money?
Actually, we came out with a total of twelve thousand dollars, we, we reimbursed for that twelve thousand, so it's a pass through vote.
So that helps, you see the sum of the delinquency being taken care of.
Correct, and, and again, as I think the lady just in front of me said, that the tax office has got two career employees over there who've done super jobs since, to, to flood, not flood down the system, vacancies. And they have actually put forth a lot of effort to continue to collect what they've done. And I think maybe, in my opinion, I would tell they did a great job because some of them, one child wasn't ready to that measure, they had to, you know, kind of do things differently. But they've done a great job and like I said, we've collected a good portion of it. We do have, only discovered, you notice you discovered a good amount this year right at the top of the thing. We did add a public facility to the account this year as we do each, our each September that were presented by the public service. That has been added and that is one reason the revenues went up, but that hadn't been collected yet, still just went out of there.
Thank you, is any additional questions?
Well, glad you're here, help us out.
Thank you, John.
Um, you've got a long history with working in departments, you shared with me the other day. Do you like the way this is presented, any recommendations? I mean, I'm not elaborating on too much, but is this a good way, the best way for us commissioners to look at it, to address it with our tax collector? Or would you make any changes on this as far as the layout?
The layout looks good and it covers all the areas that you need to know, so I would, I would, I would like to just keep like it is, it's easy. This building's already set up, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have refunds to the.
Mr. Edson, let's speak to about the.
We have refunds.
Oh, oh, gee.
Okay, you gave a, Jen, you presented refunds, we have to find them.
Okay, the refunds, do you take them individual or did you?
Well, we can do it either way, Jen, we ought to pay the taxpayer, like the first one. A hundred and sixty-two dollars and six cent, the vehicle was towed.
She's looking at the vehicle.
That's what we did, the vehicle towed and placed some tax attorney and so they got refunds for the hundred and sixty-two.
Okay, a one sixty-two oh six, that is our first one. Our proper documentation is attached to that. And is that, is that the only one we have, this vehicle, for the vehicle? What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, the commission, will we approve this refund?
I second that motion.
Yeah, motion for made in front of the second discussion, here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that's approved. Okay.
And then you have, is it in front? It was in the document that you were sent yesterday, that had the refunds for the, for taxpayers.
Oh, yeah, that was at this one.
Okay, it was in the front, it's like, it looks like yours was in a different order than mine.
I guess we can do those collectively.
I think we can do these collectively. The total of mine is one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cent, refunds for prepayments and a variety of things for overpayments.
Madam Chair, I think the motion, we do those collectively and in my motion, I move that we accept those refunds. I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion to be made in front of the second, that the refunds for prepayments be accepted, discussion here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes as well. So, I hope that things have slowed up a little in your office and getting for you and the staff.
Phone calls have slowed down a little on the south of West Lee, but we've got a few calls, it is, it is, it is. And I apologize, I take them all back, there we go. Usually, as I say, I feel online in one, one place.
Well, we can, we can always learn new ways to do, take them more efficient. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and all reports from the courts. Okay, we're moving on then to a public hearing. I entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for the FYI twenty twenty-one community transportation grant.
So I'm moving second.
Motion for the made in front of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I see, she's making her way. She always encourages us to make plenty of reading material.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is the annual head and straight budget and also for the capital and for the elderly grant.
Did you hear that?
Is it my comment?
You said elderly grant, I was checking the heading.
Also, this year I added another operating aspect of it. Basically because last year there was some money offered for operating grant for because we only had one commission meeting during that month and you have to advertise anything, I could not apply for it, so I put that in here just in case that opportunity became available. So we are asking for the same positions from the previous year. And there are two vehicles up for replacement that are in here. And it's a total budget of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars. The local share for the operating grant are le, are being leveraged from the road grant, which is for operating assistance program. And administrative local share is eighteen thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars, which we perceive being coming from agency fair. And for capital is ten thousand six hundred dollars, which we, we hope that that'll come from selling the vehicles at that time.
Okay, very similar to previous years except we did add, own by one, but in case it comes available, it's already.
Yes.
Um, any, um, did I have our motion?
I think you want to set up a room to chat and answer questions.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, we got to come out of the public, okay, we, this is a public hearing, do, do we have anyone else to, would like to make comments, I'm sorry. Okay, do I hear a motion come out of public here? Okay, Commissioner Jordan, will you receive your motion?
Yeah, I want to see it, it will come out.
Yes, okay, can we have a motion to come out of?
So move, second.
Motion's been made in front of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I do apologize to that, okay, Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah, I think the motion that will prove the death patient's request after date.
Okay, motion's been made to approve it, do I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion from the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, thank you. So, to be, got you.
Yeah.
I read every single bit of it.
I'm sure.
I know you believe me, there's no county funds with this at all?
Not in the traditional way.
Because the way it works.
Yes.
She's the department, it's not affecting that.
That's, that's why I want to make sure, we have local share.
We have local share that since we are a local department, anybody can generate our locally.
Do we cover everything?
Yes.
In our, in our transportation charges and things like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They're one hundred percent funded by?
Federal.
Federal and state?
Yes, federal and state fund and, and Bay area.
And ASK. Okay, motion's been made in front of the second, thank you for that question and answer. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. She always gives a lot to breathe, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, um, next is a resolution from the D. Code business, we have none.
Two different amendments, we have a public thing because we have to see the business.
Uh, amendments, we have to pick up the. Okay, a budget amendment, okay, a budget amendment. Uh, resign?
Good morning. We have three budget amendments, these are all for our grant plans today. Um, the first budget amendment is revision to budget amendment number one. Um, in July, we had budget amendment number one to bring forward money on the stream to break bring. After review of all of our invoices for prior year, we need to now reduce how much we brought forward for twenty, for nineteen twenty.
And this is the third one you've got.
Is this revision at the bottom? Is four twenty-four or an ankle?
Yes. Yes. Which is the amount that we need to reduce from what we brought forward based on the remaining funds for that grant. Based on what we spent.
Which are the grant dollars?
Grant dollars, yes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve one revision of budget amendment.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made in front of the second, discussion. Here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes five zero. Going back up here to number nine.
Number nine, this is for one of the emergency management grants. They're optional funds. This is a correction. It was originally claimed as the, as a negative number, which they put in as a positive number for those expenditures. This is the amount to correct right forward, the amount they did not spend in eighteen nineteen.
Okay, so does Carol put on some...
Carryover. Again, this is grant funding.
Okay, motion?
Make a motion that we approve the budget amendment of number nine.
I'll second.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair. There's detail on here is revision of budget amendment number two.
Number?
I said it would be...
Okay, motion's been made in front of the second. In discussion, here and now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
To correct the negative balance brought forward. So this was, this was not a part of another issue. This was something different. Okay.
It's supposed to let over the year, bring forward to the next year. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes five zero. Remember budget revision number ten?
These are also two of the emergency management grants that are now closed. And we just need to de-oligate those grant dollars in our budget.
And what you say, de-oligate where this, the money go?
This is, back in July, we brought forward what was remaining on this grant for him to spend. It is, these two are now closed, so we just need to get this off of our books.
Okay, clean off the books.
Yeah.
I make motion, we approve budget revision number ten.
Do I have a second?
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made in front of the second, discussion.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. So what happens after a thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars? This now has been de-oligated.
The way that those grants were, the county fronts the money. So whatever, whatever, for example, if the grant that he receives is for sixty thousand for that particular grant. So we do a budget amendment to appropriate that sixty thousand dollars. If he only spends fifty-nine thousand, then we just need to take the remaining portion off the books because the county will get reimbursed fifty-nine thousand, not sixty. So this is, this is to zero outlets in the budget column because they're closed.
So no additional funds are going back into the fund balance because of this?
Well, we appropriate that in July, moved forward thinking that these were not closed. So we're just putting that back on the books and to fund balance.
So any money that could be used for the budget shortfall, is that...
We never had this money.
Never had it?
No, no. It was money that he thought he was going to get. We pulled it forward. He did not spend this amount and therefore we did not get, had to be reimbursed. We did not spend it out, therefore we were not reimbursed.
Okay.
How was that Australian above of this decrease?
I'm sorry.
It looked like it wasn't the increase somewhere, going back to a price. I looked at that way.
That call my two, Commissioner Jordan. Only, the difference, the only reason it looks at ways because it's reimbursed. We, we fronted the money.
Well, in, in July, when we brought forward the funds, that increases what we're saying. A part of our fund balance appropriated is we're obligating, you know, these funds for these grants. So in essence, I mean, we, yes, we are decreasing the amount that we had said would be fund balance appropriated on the books, but we have not received this. This is not cash in our checking account. This is to correct, not to correct it, but to de-oligate it on the books. We will get reimbursed for the actual money spent, so essentially it's a wash. It's a grant.
You say sixty thousand, we spent fifty-nine. We get reimbursed fifty-nine, then we had to clear off the thousand off the books.
Right, because he didn't spend.
We didn't spend it, we don't have it. Okay.
Because if we, if we actually received the money upfront, if we received, for example, that sixty thousand and he only spent fifty-nine, the county would have to repay back that one thousand dollars for the designated money for that specific grant.
Okay, do I have, that was a question? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's approved five zero. Okay, we'll go to the DSS resolution.
We're going to skip over. Thought we were going back to...
Well, I thought we'd do these two things and then go back.
Okay, okay.
Because there, I think, will not take but two minutes. Okay, I'll recognize Commissioner Jones.
All right, just a little history. The, I serve as the Department of Social Services Board Chair. Commissioner Owen serves as a member. Mrs. Bernix Johnson is a member that's with us today. Ms. Bernix, will you stand up? And we have our director, Ms. Holly, you'll stand up also. I'm going to read a resolution that the Board of Social Services passed at our meeting last month honoring Mr. Jordan for his year of service. Whereas Mr. Henry L. Jordan served at his last meeting on the Gates County Department of Social Services Board on June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas Mr. Jordan has dutifully served with distinction on the board since July, two thousand and ten. And whereas his genuine concern for the well-being of the agency, employees, citizens, and members of the board reflect his unwavering respect for his colleagues. And whereas his combination of compassion and understanding for the issues facing the agency makes him a unique asset to the agency. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this the twenty-third day of September, two thousand and nineteen, that this Board of Directors expresses its sincere appreciation to Mr. Henry L. Jordan for his contribution to the growth and performance of the agency during his tenure. Furthermore resolved, that this Board of Directors extends to Mr. Henry L. Jordan and his family best wishes for the future. We have a certificate that says, Henry L. Jordan, an appreciation for your dedicated service to the Gates County Board of Social Services, two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen. And he served, he served his term from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and nineteen. Presented this today, the second day of October, two thousand and nineteen.
You're hit.
Madam Chair, it's a pleasure of the board. If I could get Ms. Johnson and Director Holly over here for pictures with the commissioners. If Mr. Brown would use his photography skills.
Do it right here. While everybody's coming, I'd like to add to, to what Jonathan read. We looked at some, some certificates that the DSS had awarded to previous people who have left that position, no longer on board, that has served well. And when we looked at their certificates, we, we said we wanted Mr. Jordan's certificate to say something different. We wanted to, really to describe, so, Henry, this is not a cookie cutter certificate. I want you to know, we took, we took time in that board meeting and said, what do we want to say about our friend, Henry L. Jordan? And that's, that's what's on the certificate.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure serving those leaders.
How you want to do it, Cal?
You can dip over like you want.
Yeah. Stay behind right a minute.
You slide that right side out like I want, there you go. All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Got that.
All right. We'll do it, one take.
And, and to let it be known also, that came up in the meeting, as Commissioner Owen just said, there was a lot of time and effort put in by Commissioner Jordan for the social services board as well, for the Gates County Housing Committee as well. Many years of good service to that, he provided assistance to the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan.
And thank you for your service as well, Mr. Jordan, and I had it at the board. And you and, and you can't beat the place.
Jack, the place is, Mr. Jordan, nowhere close to you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay.
I give you a certificate for that.
Okay, on Board of Adjustment Appointment, Lisa Sheridan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Unfortunately, last month, we were told that we had someone resigning from our Board of Adjustment due to some unforeseen circumstances. So we're here today to have you appoint another member to our Board of Adjustment. I do not have their application.
So I would have it in that... How many people on the Board of Adjustments?
All right.
How many people on the Board of Adjustments?
We have, we have seven. Two are alternates, and then we have five regular members. They all have the same authority, same house, things like that.
And of course, they all, good unless there's other, somebody absent.
Yes, an absence or if there's a conflict of interest. That's right, exactly. You know, currently, but the member we lost was from the Sunbury area. You know, we try to build definitely from our townships. We do not get a lot of participation and volunteers sometimes. It's just a by the way. So we do try to do that. And I see, if I'm correct, and please tell me from all of this person's from your, that's from your township, basically. We currently have some representation from your, and we don't want to turn it down, you know, most certainly. But we do try to get them from the townships.
The geographical areas.
Yes, we have, we have our townships in this area. And, you know, we would love to see some representation. If you know anyone, please ask them to send in an application from the Sunbury areas and other surrounding areas as well. So just a little, just to give a little bit of background on what we're looking for before you vote.
Okay, of current members, what is the geographical area?
Uh, well, we basically have, you know, the Euro area has, partly, I think we have two, if I'm not mistaken. Sunbury, we have, we've had three. And from the hospital area, we have someone as well. We had someone that had the time last year as well. And then we do have, this year, we'll be losing some members as well. So it's a little...
So we don't have anybody from the Gates or Corvita?
Exactly. We, we actually have an alternate from Corvita. And I guess we, we had thought about, we're able to, North Carolina State Unit, our ordinances as well. One of our alternates could move up into this vacant position. It was a regular position. That would help balance out in closer to the geographical area case. If they'll accept that, so that was a possibility.
So the disappointment, so we can, do we have to appoint the alternate to the permanent position? Well, not permanent position, but the, the sitting five? And then we could appoint this person as an alternate?
Yes.
So we can, we can do that today?
You can do that or not define it until we do have our regular meeting and ask the person that would be, have the most, you know, senior knowledge of how the board works. And we could let them, ask them to sit on the regular board, yes. And this could be an alternate. I don't think it has to be defined unless we just appoint to the board and then we can determine the position.
That person that you refer to, he or she, he comes to our meeting, doesn't it?
Yes.
I will say, in, in the past, when we've made vague appointments without defining it, it does cause some issues for record keeping down the road.
I thought we kind of, kind of designated alternate and a permanent member and then had we moved... I think it'd be cleaner to do it that way.
Can, can I make a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that Foster Parish be moved from the alternate to the regular position. And that this applicant, Mr. Smith, fill the alternate position left by Mr. Parish.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion's been made in front of the second. I was wanting to second it if you had. So in discussion. Here and now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And thank you for reminding us about the geographical distribution. And, okay, we also have the fireworks request from the Board of Education that they have asked for some fireworks for, like, the couple of home football games on the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of this month. Would anybody, Dr. Williams, would you like to make a comment about this?
Prepare a statement, I assume.
As long as it's not a PowerPoint presentation, Dr. Williams.
No, we have fireworks displayed that we would like to just have our fans and community people just enjoy at a football game. And not just the last two home ball games specifically, but for in case we make the playoffs. It just brings excitement, brings big crowd, just adds a lot to the school.
And it is also about spring tournament as well. I know one of these is coming home in the eighteenth. And I see you have talked about proper, you gave us a contract, and this is the person you used last year?
I don't know if it was the person last year. I wasn't really aware of that person. But Sheriff Goodwin, is that right? Sheriff Goodwin came to visit me in central office and went over all the specifics. Sheriff even, so, yeah.
Clerk, I hope that is the same.
Okay, good.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we allow the school system the authority for fireworks for this academic year as recommended by Goodwin.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, the motion's been made in front of the second, in discussion.
I was just trying to say that we should make sure that all of our insurance liability and all of our paperwork is in place.
Yes, sir.
That would include...
Yes, sir.
Yes, do you not want it more?
No, 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 thank you.
Oh, really, thank you. Okay, so this town will vote on, on to put education to the fireworks for the academic year, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That is approved five zero as well. Okay, going back nine to, oh, item, new business is the amendment to the FY budget ordinance that we've already kind of talked about to a certain extent at the beginning. And with the LGC. Why is it a pleasure of the board? Where would you like to go from here?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Edmondson made a comment, I think, to Commissioner Owen that she would have some information by the end of next week. Is that right, Jack?
End of next week.
End of next week. With that being said, that's second weekend, October. I'm, I'm not prepared today myself to vote on the proposal, the latest that we got. Well, I got it last night. I would like to, it's island tabled until our November sixth regular meeting, which would give the county manager, local government, and us, city commissioners, one month to review all the options that are out there and local government commission time to collaborate with the county finance officer and manager with the understanding, excuse me. With that being said, our November sixth meeting, if a decision is made, we do have a night meeting in November. I know the statement was made at the last meeting, that the issue was... I know the statement was made at the last meeting, as an issue of schedule, so all of us would already have a November eighteenth night meeting on our schedule. So my, my motion is that we table this item until November sixth regular meeting.
Okay, a motion has been made.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made, and seconded, any comments? Only thing I will say is, we need to go ahead and get this done, and not keep kicking the ball back in the road. I understand that we need to have the information to the, from the LGC as well, but I would hope that we could get it all taken care of in November. Because the longer the wait, the harder it's going to be. Okay, at this time, call for vote, anybody else have any comments? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all, okay, all opposed, okay, so we table that until the November sixth. Okay, um, citizen comments? None, Commissioners' comments, Mr. Jordan, this is, will start with you, have any comments for us, words of wisdom?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here today. Hopefully, we covered everything, and we extend the message to the churches of Peace County. And I thank you for all of you, sir.
Okay, thank you for serving. We'll go, Ray Freeman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I know we all recognize and we all see diverse ideas and perspectives that, that all my colleagues here bring to the table, but we must always focus on citizens and benefits for our citizens. So some of them may, may be things that we have a lot of problems with, to agree on fiscal management and what have you, but we look for joint funding opportunities, and, and we'll always consider others, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, it's a pleasure to present the resolutions to Mr. Jordan, I had the opportunity to serve on BS F Board for a number of years, and I hope someday to gain half the knowledge with regards to what we deal with there that, that he had. Thank you to the citizens for coming today, please continue to come, be involved, ask questions, it's your county. We have some hard decisions to make because of some issues that have occurred, hopefully we'll be able to make them in November, but we're gonna do, I'm gonna do the best that I can to make the best decision for the county, not only now, but going forward down the road, thank you.
Commissioner Owens?
Glad everybody could be here today, glad the ladies were here so we could ask some pointed questions about the issue that we were having with the, with the budget there. To, you know, give us a little, little bit of detail, and we have a situation that we need to work hard on, and we need to work on it for not just one budget session or one budget year, but for the upcoming budget years. And we, I want to remind the Board and the audience that we promised you that we would work real hard on the EMS issue, financing for that, so we'll make that public, that we need to be spending some quality time on that, that we have been busy. And, and I will put Commissioner Freeman on the spot, I tried to get his ear a second ago. Ms. Hoppler and myself and Commissioner Freeman attended an event on Saturday that was, was a real nice event, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Freeman, Madam Chairman, if I can, he's connected there in more ways than I am, I'm gonna ask him if he'll respond to that.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, that was a wonderful event, we're making connections, you know, Adam and Eve actually made all our connections. So, so we are joined together there. But Thad York's cousin of mine, and that was a Thad York Day, and then, here in Gates County, recognizing Thad York, who served the state forever, and forever a good friend, as well as a relative, a cousin. But Thad York was kind of, some kind of special to me, so I happen to be a bodyguard for one of our governors, his security. And Thad's office was just right down the hall, so when I could escape from the governor, I would head straight to Thad's office for some coffee and some conversation. And we talked about Gates County a lot, and the people in Gates County, those days, I, I certainly loved it. When I found out that Madam Chairman and the Historical Society have Thad York room, that was even better. And Van, who was, who was one of the relatives of Thad, and has Angus Farner, and Raleigh has a few things to give to the, to the Thad York room. So, it was a great event, it's good to see all the other cousins there, certainly Madam Chairman and Vice Chairman Jack gave great speeches in, at the event, and in the honor of Thad York.
Thank you, one of the things that, the historic marker for Thad York was unveiled on Highway one fifty-eight, where it goes off to Harold's Road. And that would be a permanent reminder of Mr. York, you see the historic markers up and down to the road. We have three additional ones here in the county, but no one from the modern era, so it was nice to see Mr. York. And we had to wait for twenty-five years, I can step before the Historical Commission would, and Raleigh would grant permission for a, to put a marker up to him. So it was a grand day for everyone. And I just want to mention it, but thank you, Commissioner Owens, somebody do it there.
And by the way, the sign is still out at his former home place, I don't know who's responsible for taking that down, I thought I'd throw that out as well.
Oh, the template, is that?
I'm sorry.
The cemetery?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, just an item of business, the, the plant, D O T, they have had, because of all the hurricanes that we've had for the last three years, they also have the budgetary problems, and so they also have some rules that they cannot spend, they have to keep so much in reserve. So they have suspended some projects, and two of them do affect Gates County. One is the, from US one fifty-eight, A and P Hill, the Passaport County line, they were going to work on that, that has been suspended, as well as kind of the, we do it, I think, from North Carolina thirty-two, from the Gliden Road to the Virginia State line. Those two projects are suspended, they are not canceled, and when they said they have money, that they will re-insure. But it's kicked off down the road a while, so, there is some problems across the state concerning money. I'd like to thank you all for coming, being with us, some hard decisions have to be made. We did, and as the two ladies from the LGC, it's gonna take us a while to get back to where we were, but I think we have a group that's willing to work and work hard to help us find ways to make this legal. I think all of them want to share, some of them are version, but thank you for coming, enjoy this. The last day of the summer, I think it's supposed to be the nineteenth sixties, by the weekend, which I count looking forward to, because it's been mighty hot. Okay, I hear a motion, and go to closed session.
A move, second.
Motion's been made, proper second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a five minute brief. We can have a motion to come out of closed session?
A move, second.
Motion's been made, proper second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, so we'll, I closed session, do a motion to adjourn.
A move, second.
Motion's been made, proper second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, as far as we know, we'll finish until November.